...her name. Did we have anyone else sign up for this evening? Did any of our two audience members sign up to speak this evening? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report again, we'll recognize Mr. Ken Berlin, superintendent of school. Mr. Berlin.
May I start before a second? I have no report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Chair recognizes Mrs. Vicki Bendig for the business administrator's report. Mrs. Bendig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I give my three reports that I have for this evening, I'm going to turn it over to the nutrition group. They're going to give us an update on cafeteria.
Thank you very much. Please introduce our two nutrition favorite people.
We have Melissa Kingen and Amanda Omly. Amanda Omly is our onsite food service director and Melissa is the regional manager for the nutrition group herself.
Welcome and thank you very much for coming tonight. You always have nice things at our table and I can hear from you tonight, so thank you for coming.
Today we're going to talk to you about what the kids get all the time and we always like to do these presentations to the school boards, especially if you have new members, which you do, or just being new, you know, to contracting. So tonight's a little nutrition one. We want to talk about the school food service program, the rules and regulations are, how the finances work. So you have a better understanding of what the kids get and how it all works together. So that's our goal tonight. I don't know who's running them.
I am.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. So just a little bit about contracting. Of course, you decided to contract your food service program. It's a five-year contract with four one-year renewals. So in the next couple of months, Vicki will be bringing to you a renewal contract with financial numbers on it and that you'll be voting to renew that. The state requires you every five years to seek the full notice, but it's like I said, a five-year contract with four one-year renewals. You are on a full cost billing, which means we bill you based on what goes through. So we do an inventory at the beginning of the month, we do an inventory at the end of the month, to save you time. And whatever is used is what you get billed for. So we own the inventory in the district. That way you don't have to sit on your books and we bill you again for what we use. And we have all the paperwork, you know, we can show you everything that we go through. And then along with that, we charge you our fees and it's our administrative and management fee. Our management fees are pre-allowable, pre-tax profit. Our administrative fee covers things like things at corporate office, me, and just all our support staff that go see it on the screen. Those fees can only go up each year before you meet the consumer price index. So we can't say after this year, you know, our fees are going up 10 percent or we're going up 15 percent. For next year, they can only go up 2.3. We can only base it on that. They can't go up any higher than that. So it is, you know, limited how much this can go up, which protects you. As far as deposits, sales and pricing, that's all you. There's always that misconception that, you know, our nutrition is making lots of money today. That's not how it works. All of the money that's brought in during the school day goes into the school district account. We only get paid, again, what we go through in those fees. So all the deposits are yours, all the sales, you set the pricing, it's still your, but we just help you manage it. The staff, all of the kitchen staff are on district payroll. The only one on our payroll is coming in. So she manages all of your staff. And I have to say, they've been very supportive this year. We've been really pleased with them. They've just been really willing to learn and just really jumping on board. We take baby steps with them in any new school that we go into, but we've been really able to look at this with them this year. We guarantee our bottom line. So, you know, we give you a bottom line and we guarantee that. We have to guarantee it every year as part of the contract. So if we say you're going to break even, and if you don't break even, then we'll pay you back what our fees were. So that's one of the basic things of the contract. You have full control of the program. Anything that we do will go to you. We'll need the Vicki and Ken to just make sure that things are okay to do. We need the principals, what they need promotions if you want to do, because again, if it's you, it's your program. We just want to help manage it and get self-sufficient. And the reason why everybody contracts anymore is buying power and support. We serve, I think it was eight million meals last year. So we're like that Walmart. We're buying a lot of products. So we work directly with the menu manufacturer to get the best pricing. It doesn't matter what size your county is. You know, just because you might be smaller than Warren County doesn't mean that your food costs are higher. Everybody has the same pricing, it don't matter what your size and the support as you go to the next screen. This is one of the main reasons. I mean, not only is the food variety increased, but our support services, we have, you know, just a wealth of knowledge on that screen. We have dieticians, we have corporate chefs, we have the regional manager. I have an operations specialist that's been at this district part of it this year. So again, these are all the areas that we have. There is not a day that a menu should be lost. They're not going to know what to do. She always has all this help. So that's one of the main reasons, because there's a lot of different services that keeps coming out. So Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, I don't know if any of you have heard about it. It started for the actual school years, like 11, 12, or 2011, 12. But this is all part of Michelle Obama's Get Healthy Act. This was a really major, it was a major change for the food service program. A lot of changes. You know, Trump is talking now about, you know, easing up on some of those changes that originally happened. We'll see what happens. A little bit of flexibility will be nice in some areas, as you'll see as I keep going, but this had a huge impact on schools. If you go to the next screen, you'll see that. 2010, 11, before that kicked in, 31, 28 million lunches were served in the USA. When this kicked in, 2012, 13, you know, that's when it kicked in. And when you look at 13, 14, you know, over one and a half million meals were lost because the kids just weren't getting lunches anymore. And it wasn't, they have to take fruits and vegetables now. They would want to do that. There's less sodium, it doesn't taste good. So there was a huge loss of meals during that time. And they're picking back up. So the main goals when that all came out was increasing fruits and vegetables, which is a great thing. Whole grains and the milk changed. You know, we can no longer serve whole milk, you know, when that all kicked in. And we get asked that a lot, especially in farming communities like we're in. Why don't you serve whole milk? We're not allowed. You know, the highest percentage we could serve is 1 percent. We can't even serve 2 percent. So it has to be fat-free or 1 percent. Sodium was a big thing when this first came out. And they gave us different levels and stages that we were going to have to achieve as we went on over 10 years. Fortunately, they have eased up on this. I mean, it was to the point that we were not going to be able to serve a real cheese sandwich because there's too much sodium in it. So they realized how difficult it was for the schools to get to those levels that they wanted. There would be absolutely no taste in anything with what they wanted. And they did ease up on that fortunately, so we can serve some of those items. And calories, they really limit calories. It's based on the age level, K through 8, 9 through 12. So we have to make sure that we follow the fitness requirements. And one of the biggest changes when this kicked in is at breakfast, the kids have to have a half cup of fruit on their tray. We don't serve vegetables at breakfast. If we did, they have to have either a half cup of fruit or a half cup of vegetable. I'm showing some trays here in a little bit, but that was a huge change and a huge expense for school districts because now they have to have that on that tray. You know, the kids are filling it out. You hear a lot about food waste. Chum chum out there. Uh, we'll wait. And with lunch, they have to take at least a half cup of fruit or a half cup of vegetable on their tray. Most kids do take the fruit, so it wasn't a big deal. But you do have some of those kids that just don't want to take it. But they have to have that on their tray. Rested claim that for you to get reimbursement back from federal government. So it was a big change. So if you ask, you know, what happens if a student comes through your line and they just say, no, I'm not taking the fruit or vegetable, we have to charge them a la carte prices. So they actually have to pay more for that meal because they wouldn't take the fruit or vegetable. So we get creative with it. You know, we have a basket of apples by the cash register or a box of raisins. It's just something to get them to take that so that they don't have to pay a lot of money for that meal.
I had to do onsite review of all of the meals at each of the buildings before February 1st. So the last week of February, I visited all the schools and witnessed the lunch and breakfast lines working and how long kids had to wait in line and what they were taking and what they weren't taking. And the cashiers do a great job at saying, hey, you need to grab an apple, get something, get a fruit. You know, you don't have enough things on your tray or whatever so that we can get that meal. We want it to be a reimbursable meal so that we can get the funding to help pay for it. So they do a great job at making sure that the kids are getting what they need so that it's a meal and it doesn't cost mom and dad more for the same or less things. It's like a meal dealer.
And we have a shared table in the elementary school. So the students have to take that through or juice or vegetable. If they get back to their table and they don't want it, they can put it on our shared table where other kids can come up and get it if they want. So that's been a great way to eliminate the waste.
As long as it's whole.
Well, a sealed container.
Yeah.
Whole in a sealed container. We make sure that.
You do that in high school as well. I remember all the kids throwing their, as soon as they'd go to the line, they would just throw their, their free in the trash.
Yes, they throw it into another bin now.
That's good.
Yeah, another kid's can take it. So that helps. As long as it's on that tray.
Do you feel like it gets utilized, the shared table?
It does to some extent, but like the, say for example, the milk is in an ice pack tray. So what isn't, we can put it into circulation for the next day. So it's not being wasted and thrown into the garbage. Some kids do. I've seen, not a lot in elementary, but at the high school level, kids might want a second milk or they might want that, you know, belly bears or crackers to take with them for later in the day or something like that. The shared tables have really eliminated a lot of that food going in the trash can for the kids. So that's why we offer a variety of fruits and vegetables. We don't just offer just orange as a food selection. Students like oranges, they aren't going to take it. Or if they do take it, they're going to throw it out. So that's why we offer a variety, applesauce, pears, peaches every day so that they have that variety to choose from. Most likely, they're not like one of those options. So we're going to show some stuff. I have breakfast trays. There's lunch up there. We'll do, sorry. So just so you have an idea of what the kids can get for lunch. And if you have kids, a lot of times they'll come home and say, I'm still hungry. They didn't give me enough to eat at lunch. These are actually breakfast trays. They have to, I mean, this is what we offer. Again, they have to have, I'll take this one. This is, you know, we have to offer the fruit, the juice. We have to offer a grain every day for breakfast. A lot of times we hear that just, we put a lot of carbs. We may see that cinnamon roll. You know, we see this benefit bar. Wow, there's just too many carbs for breakfast. It's because we have to. That's part of the rules that we have to follow. But we like to offer, you know, yogurt once, with it once in a while. We can offer a cheese stick. But again, they have to have a grain for breakfast. So that's why you see a lot of pancakes, waffles and things like that.
Oh, no.
And is it a lower carb for lunchtime that they're requesting? We still have to offer carbs, grains at lunch, but they can be found too. So we, you know, but we have to, you know, we do a menu analysis and we have to make sure that things fall into those calories, fat, grains, iron, you know, what they want to be, all of that stuff. So this is, you know, sample. So a child at elementary level can take all of this for breakfast. That's pretty good. High school's the same way. The difference is we get into lunchtime trays. That's when we call it, if you were in high school and elementary or middle school, these are elementary. So elementary, they can have an entree and we do offer the salads. And then of course, they offer the grain. They don't have to take the bread. The biggest thing is that they have to have at least three out of the five on the tray. So there's the fruit, the veggie, the meat, the milk, and the grain. So they have to have at least three out of those and one has to be your fruit or vegetable. But an elementary student can take all of this, you know, the fruit. They can take another veggie along with the salad, even though it's got lots of vegetables in it. The munchables, we have a variety of munchables that we offer. It's amazing how many of the Oscar Mayer lunch bowls we see in the lunch boxes.
A lot of them that open, yeah.
They're expensive. They're extremely high in sodium. So we offer munchables that are healthier, cheaper. I mean, you can get a whole square munchable at $2.35, which I probably don't cost just for a munchable at the store. Again, they can have a munchable and then they can have the fruit or vegetable. High school level, this is the level they get to more. At the elementary level, they can take two vegetables. So if we have corn on the menu and they always have their fresh vegetables, they can take corn and a fresh vegetable. They can actually take two of the other ones too. At the high school level, they can take two fruits and two vegetables. So it was thought of a clear. So it's actually hard to fit all of the food on a tray that the high school level can get. They can take two fruits. They can take two vegetables. Of course, the pizza is a big hit.
My wife just tried the pizza. She said it was really good. She just told me about it. She said, she laughed. It's good.
This is a veggie wrap. Again, kids eat with their eyes too. So we, you know, really come a long way with our packaging. You know, we put it, we don't just wrap it and so we unwrap. You know, we put it in fancy packaging like sheets. The kids are more likely to take it. So this is a veggie wrap. So again, they can take two fruits, two vegetables. If we had mashed potatoes and french fries, you know, they can take a half vegetable and a full vegetable. They don't have to take all this, but they have to have at least, you know, that salad or a half cup of vegetable on that tray.
Do you still have the things like, kind of like chicken bowl was like a big thing?
Popcorn chicken bowl. Once a month, we have, we have a four-week rotation. That's one of the most popular. So is brunch for lunch, french toast sticks and sausage. So that's on a four-week cycle. We do it with another chicken bowl, like General Tso's type of chicken bowl with rice and the bobcat fries. That was not something that was in our menu plan, but the kids really, really liked it. And we made it so they met our requirements. We're giving them enough of the grain and enough of the protein that we made a bobcat fry for. That's on a four-week rotation at the middle school and high school. Elementary school still does those items, but they're in secondary.
It's our bobcat fries.
French fries.
Greek fries.
Is the, is the vegetable. Yep. And then it has beef on top and cheese.
My daughter was asking the other day, disco fries? And so I looked on your app and like it tells you all the breakdown of the nutritional value, but not what they actually are.
Yep. And you can see a picture of it usually.
So that's why I wondered.
The disco, the disco fries are new. We haven't menued them yet. They're.
This week.
Yeah, they're on this week. And I don't know, I don't remember. Are they the ones that have pulled pork, I think? Pulled pork and french fries and cheese curds, I believe, is what's on the disco fries. But that'll be our first time menuing them. We usually do like a new item each month is something that they haven't had. We usually do a recipe of the month and a food fusion. So there's two brand-new items in addition to the traditional items. And then if they like it, then we can continue on. And if they don't like it, like we did the popcorn chicken in the waffle cone and the kids were like, I don't know about that. So it was just a one-time thing. We tried it and they didn't like it. So. Right. And each district is different, you know. So the first year in a school district is a different menu. You know, so we put on a lot of different things, kind of see what the kids like, what they don't like, so that we can, you know, make sure we have something that they do like going forward. The kids here be totally different than they do with your food or court, you know. So it's just, it's a matter of finding out what they like. Here's another high school tray. At the high school, we serve, it's a whole muscle chicken sandwich. It's a whole muscle chicken. In the elementary, it gives you a run of chicken too, but it's not the whole muscle. The whole muscle costs quite a bit more and the calories are a little bit higher. So this has been very popular in the high school. But again, they can take two fruits, two vegetables, and a milk. So.
Need to get a picture of this.
We need to get a picture?
Yes.
Not on, it's a new recipe.
Yeah, I can, I send in requests if I see that there isn't, you know, nutritional information or there's something missing. I send in a request for it. So.
Do you take suggestions from the kids?
Yes. They can actually through the app rate the food and leave comments about the food. We also do gap meetings, which is use advisory council. Like at the middle school, I mean, a student council. Other times, it's just, you know, the principal or, you know, certain people are selected. We try to get them with a pack and people that buy their lunch. You know, some people that are full pay, some people that are free to get a variety to take suggestions through meetings also. But we've had a lot of feedback through the app because that's quick and easy and they can just put in their information.
So can you increase it, like favorites, you know, once a month, twice a month or?
Well, that's how we actually got onto that four-week rotation with the popcorn chicken bowl and the, was from seeing those things. And I can see like every week, Wednesday, the sales are the highest in the middle school and the high school because that's the most popular day. Sometimes if you do it too much, then they kind of get burned off from it a little bit. But now I'm like, so they love french toast sticks and sausage. We're going to do, in March, we're going to do a pancake bar and see is that equally as popular as french toast sticks? And if it is, we can do pancakes one day, we can do french toast sticks one day, all in the same month. We're going to do like a walk station with a stir-fry action station. If that's really popular, we see that maybe chicken is more popular than beef, then we can do chicken or maybe do a chicken and a beef. It's all trial and error just because we are new and, you know. But the kids are really good at telling us if they like it or they don't like it. And we can cover the sales.
And I will say that I know from experience that prior to contracting out, part of the decision to contract out was we wanted more variety. We wanted better looking food. We wanted nicer, healthier options for our, for our students. So I know that we had a four-week menu that rotated. There was 28 menu items that were not prepared fresh. They were heat, a lot of it was heat and serve that rotated. Now there is 150 menu items and, you know, we're not rotating foods unless it's on a rotation because we know the kids really like it for a period of six to eight weeks. You know, we're not repeating things. So I think it's, it's been really great for the kids.
Dan, you have custard balls before, which is a processed peanut butter jelly sandwich. We make whole wheat, you know, peanut butter and jelly sandwich. So that was a transition with the kids. Somebody could go, oh, I like the custard balls. Now they're getting used to peanut butter and jelly. Well, and what, the other thing is they didn't like how much peanut butter was actually. They weren't used to how much peanut butter is supposed to be on a peanut butter and jelly sandwich to get the protein. And since they weren't liking it, we actually cut peanut butter in half. And now we offer them a cheese stick with it. And it's gone up since they don't have overwhelming peanut butter and not enough jelly.
Yeah.
Yeah, you put a bit of peanut butter.
You have it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot of peanut butter. Go into the next slide here. So just for lunch, you know, with, with what we have to serve, this is giving you an idea, you know, we have to offer the milk. Like I said, we can't offer anything higher than 1 percent. When it originally came out, we were not allowed to serve 1 percent flavored milk. We had to undergo a skin, that three flavored milk. Kids did not like it. They ended up reversing that and letting us serve at least 1 percent flavored, you know, chocolate milk. We have chocolate, vanilla, strawberry, we have cream milk coming out. So that was nice if they had up that. We offer the fruits, the vegetables. We have to offer veggie subgroups. One of the trays had chickies on it. We have to offer a review at least once a week. So you'll see baked beans, re fried beans, chickies. That seems to be the most popular.
Roasted chickies, they like.
Roasted chickies. That's because we have to offer these subgroups throughout the week. Originally, it was 100 percent whole grains we had to serve when this first came out. Now it's 50 percent. So we have to make sure that this 50 percent of what we're serving is, is whole grain. Again, calories are restricted, no trans fats. Any of the foods that we serve are no trans fats. That's not allowed. And every five years, you get audited by the state. That's the label. So I think you were audited last year, so it should be good for five. We already did the breakfast trays. Again, breakfast, we have to offer milk. We offer fruit and juice. Again, 50 percent whole grains, calories are restricted, no trans fats. And again, you get audited every five years on that. Again, our menus are on Nutrislice. They can download the app. It's on your website. And again, you can see all the calories and fats, all the nutritional makeup of those foods. We have pictures for most items. Some things are missing. If your student is allergic to soy or gluten allergy or milk, they can click on a box and it will eliminate all the items that have that. So they can correct their menu for that. Gives all the carb counts. The school nurse loves it for the students that have that, that needs. She can go in there, see what they've eaten and make sure she can count the carbs. So that's been great. The other thing as part of this act is smart snacks. Those are the a la carte things that we sell. And it's not just a la carte, but we serve in the cafeteria. This ruling is anything that's sold in the school that's from midnight to 30 minutes after the school day ends. So if you have store stores, if you have vending machines, if you have a football team selling, back in my day, it was playing pie doughnuts, right? Those are all limited. You're not allowed to, you know, go out of certain calorie limits, sodium, sugar. You know, the beverages, we are not allowed to sell flavored water or certain amounts of beverages in the elementary schools. Flavored water is not even allowed in the middle school level, but we can sell just regular water. So it's very limited. The hard thing with this, and I think this is what Trump might be making some changes to, is we can actually sell Diet Pepsi at school. We need Diet Pop, but we can't sell a 16-ounce milk because of the calories. So there's just a lot of things with this, these rules that make it very difficult because kids love milk, you know. They can buy two milks, but we can't sell them a 16-ounce chunk. But again, we can sell Diet Pop because that's allowed. So, but we don't here. So, but again, anything that's going on in the school district, selling-wise, you know, this is at classroom parties, but this is, you know, if you had a school store or a vending machine, these restrictions have to be followed in all these foods from midnight to 30 minutes after the school day. Concessions stands at sports games, you can do it at the park. It's not restricted there. But there's restrictions on fundraisers. Again, any food that's sold during school day. An a la carte, you know, the reason why we sell a la cartes and we sell snacks, it helps offset a lot of expenses. You know, you have labor expense, you have food expense, you have, you know, equipment and depreciation. So selling the a la carte really is additional sales that'll offset those expenses. You can now claim those for reimbursement from the government. They don't give you money for those. And it has to be priced so that, you know, you want the kids to get a reimbursable meal. We want that to be the better deal. But kids can buy an extra piece of pizza. They can buy an extra chicken patty sandwich. And we do that because it helps offset, you know, their expenses. One of the things we hear a lot is from the teachers in all the school districts, you know, why, why do we have to use so much for our lunch? And that's because it's regulated. Yes. Believe it or not, the 260 or the, for breakfast or 360 for lunch, in every school district, we always get that question. And that's because the government regulates what that price must be. You cannot, you know, subsidize teacher meals through your food service program. So each year, there's a formula we have to follow and you have to be at least at those levels to be in compliance. So for this year, your breakfast price has to be at like at least $1.50 and $3.25 for lunch. So again, in the black is what you currently are. So you are in compliance with that. And we cannot claim those meals for reimbursement either. So you're not getting any money for dollar meals.
Did you say people complain about?
I can tell you second teachers do not, have, did not complain at my time.
Oh, my goodness.
But a lot of times, I think they don't understand because they're getting the exact same meal as a student, but the student is paying less because they're not getting it. You know. Just to give you an idea where a majority of your revenue comes from the food service program, and that is from the state, federal government. The federal government is the biggest amount that you get. But just to give you an idea, the state gives you 10 cents for every breakfast and lunch that you serve, every reimbursable breakfast and lunch. It's been 10 cents for at least 23 years. I've been doing this, I've aged myself, but, but at least they give you money. Some states do not give money towards school lunch programs. Some are very fortunate. In Pennsylvania, it gives at least 10 cents. They also give additional money if you have a breakfast program. They give you an additional 2 cents for every lunch that is served. If you serve breakfast, if you serve over 20 percent breakfast in any of our building, they'll give you an additional 2 cents for every lunch for doing that. So the goal is always to serve over 20 percent in the buildings, even though 2 cents doesn't seem like a lot of money. It adds up on your, you know, serving a lot of meals. The federal government, the federal government rates go up every year, mostly anywhere from 2.75 to 3 percent. But just to give you an idea of, you know, what they give you for each eligibility. So students that are not eligible for free or reduced breakfast or lunch, you receive back 31 cents for every paid breakfast that they get. Reduced, the reduced kids pay 30 cents. And then you get an additional $1.90 from the federal government. Free, 2.20 for every breakfast. And then for lunches, you'll see 34 cents for the paid students, 303 for reduced, and 3.43 for, for free, if you're eligible for free meals. When the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act came out, they said, well, since this is going to cost you more money, we're going to give you a little extra money to do that. So they, originally, they gave you 6 cents for every lunch that you served to help cover that. They just updated to 7 cents this year, which for, in this district, is about $8,800 a year. So it probably cost you $30,000, but they're going to be able to settle. So that's how it worked out. At least they're giving you something. We can go back to that other screen real quick.
Melissa.
Yeah.
Is that what they give you in first, let's say for free lunch, 3.43, regardless of what you charge?
Yes. Well, regard, right, yeah. For, for students that are eligible for free meals, you're getting $3.43. So for a paid lunch, so the student like at the high school level is paying 2.60 plus you're getting 34 cents for that lunch too. So that is going to be my point is districts that have a high amount of free and reduced eligible kids, that's great for the food service bottom line. Student, in this district, and you'll see it in the next couple of screens, you have a very low eligibility rate, which is great. You have a good economy in this area, but it's bad for the food service bottom line. Because as you can see, you know, you're going to, you get a lot more money for free and reduced lunches than you do paid, even though the kids are paying, you know, they're getting some reimbursement. So that, that makes it a little tougher in districts that don't have a high eligibility rate. Commodities, at the bottom, you also get government food, which is an extra fruits and vegetables and ground beef and pork. In this district, you receive about $27,000 of food from the government. So that's why you see a lot of chicken on the menu. You see peas and corn because that's food that you're getting in, that you don't have to purchase, that we want to make sure that people are utilizing. So, and if there's ever any bonus items, you can. Next screen. So in your district, just to give you an idea where you're at, your enrollment's 13, around 1351. You have 421 students eligible for free meals. You have 72 that are eligible for reduced and 858 that are eligible for paid. So as you can see, you know, you're at 36% free reduced eligibility. 50% even for Title I grants. You know, the higher your free and reduced, the better, you know, you get those Title I grants. So you're at 36%, which, you know, comparing it to other, you know, other districts, I mean, that's low. Which is, again, it's not a bad thing. It's a good thing because your economy is good. But again, for the food service program, it, it makes it hard to be a self-sufficient financially. I'm sure, you know, you've heard of every school district, all the kids get free meals. You can see, we, we do that at Quarry now, Air Quarry, Gerard, it's called the CEP program, where the kids get a free breakfast and lunch. The reason they, they get that is because they have such a high amount of free eligible students that they're, they can join that program so the kids, all the kids get free meals. You're not even near that far in this school district. So hate to give you that bad news, but you, you would lose a lot of money if you were to jump on that program just because of the way the formulas are. Currently, you know, what we serve, we serve about 241 breakfasts a day and about 687 lunches a day. So breakfast, again, 20% is that mark that we like to hit. So you get that extra money. We are at 20% at the middle school, so you do get 4 cents at that school. We're getting closer and closer to the elementary high school.
I have a question. Do we, do we have data on what numbers were prior to the food service? Or do we know?
The data is there. It is not compiled in a nice picture. So when I have some extra time, I will do that so that you have it. But I have to dig through some paperwork to get it, so.
I don't know that it's worth your time, other than to say, we, we made the shift relatively recently. It sounds all positive. I'm just curious what the numbers are.
It's all there. I just have to get a spreadsheet so we can have a chart.
With all your free time.
Yeah.
Just to give you an idea too, you know, you have 421 students in this district that are low income. They're, they're eligible for free meals. Currently, we serve about 162 out of that 420 on breakfast. So when I look at that, you know, I'm looking at, okay, you have 421 kids that are low income families. You only have 162 eating breakfast. So are those kids eating enough money? You know, if they're not, you know, there's my studies that, there's the grades, there's the attention, there's the behavior. So that is a number that we always look at, you know, is why aren't these free kids eating? Because they're already coming from low income homes. We have about 300 of them eating lunch. So 300 out of 421 eating lunch, that's good. For breakfast is always, you know, the thing that we want to work at because again, studies have been directed, you know, grades and test grades. I always joke, every, you know, school districts, you know, always say during PS the same week, oh, we want all the kids to have free breakfast. We want all the kids to eat. I always say, well, what's the difference from any other town? You know, they're not going to do good on these tests if they're not learning throughout the year. So, you know, a lot of districts have gone to that breakfast in the classroom. We have kiosks, we have grab and go, breakfast in the classroom. I have schools that are serving 85% of the kids in the morning because they can eat in the classroom. You know, a lot of late buses, you know, they have it right there. So it's something that they always look at.
You think that would help boost our numbers up?
Right.
It's like 420 more kids should be eating breakfast and lunch on the free meal.
Yeah, that would be great.
Not any less, any better.
Do you mind if we are doing, if we're.
The middle school, the, the middle school is doing breakfast in the classroom.
And they're your highest percentage.
They go to the common areas and there's a kiosk there. And then the younger two grades can go in. They usually just take a straight to their classroom. And the older two grades, they actually kind of mingle. You got to see that. They have tables out there and they play their music on their phones and it's just like a social time for them. But a lot of them are eating breakfast at the same time.
I think the middle school is the highest percentage. We have the highest percentage participating and they can eat in the classroom.
And what are they eating?
What are they eating? What are the?
The same thing that the high school offers every day. The same, the same things that are on here. It's not any different meal.
They have a cart, a chicken cart and set the cart up with all of the items.
But it has.
Free and.
Pot and cold.
Yeah, and the fruits and juice. And they have all the same places. But at the high school, I think a lot of the, not necessarily the problem, but when they come in and are routed, they have to like turn and go into the cafeteria. And I think so many of them, you know, they're with their friends and, you know, say, I may be a free student, but my two best friends are not. And their two best friends have already ate breakfast and they're just going to go with their friends. And at the elementary school, Tuesdays and Thursdays are always our highest days because they do walking club on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And sometimes the attendance of walking club is up to 400, Miss Penzog said. So how many kids are choosing to do walking club with their friends as opposed to going and sitting in the cafeteria and eating their breakfast?
If we looked at that the other day, it was about 50 less kids on the walking days.
We, we looked at Thursday versus Friday. So between Thursday and Friday, it was 15 in the elementary school.
Which the physical activity is great, but again, I worry about the low incomes. Are they, are they, are they not eating until they get lunch at 11 o'clock? So.
And a lot of times in elementary, there's late buses. Like last week, there was at least one late bus every single day of the week. And we get, I would say, two or less students after 9:00 AM at the elementary school when there's a late bus. So out of however many kids are coming off of that bus, two or less are eating breakfast.
Do they still have the opportunity to eat breakfast if they were going to? Do they know that?
Yes, and they announce that, like Lynn is really good in the morning. She says, bus 92. That one sticks in my head. I remember. Bus 92 has just arrived. These students may be going down to breakfast. Please hold your attendance until 9:20.
Oh, right.
But, and we even have the option of a paper bag where they can take grab and go items. I know the teachers aren't crazy about cereal in the classroom, but they can grab a breakfast bar, they can grab a yogurt. They can grab so many different things and we always keep the register open. We don't even close it between breakfast and lunch. So if someone comes down at, you know, 9:40 because their parent brought them to school, they can get breakfast anytime. We're there. They can just come in and they can get food.
I feel like the pressure on the kids against the classroom. Because I teach third grade and it's like we start on the first second when that bell rings and it's go, go, go. So they feel that pressure and I know that they don't want to go to second. So that's why I'm going to bring them up. Like the middle school, I don't know. I feel like they.
I love that idea.
We have, we have breakfast in the classroom, again, your.
How people rush all the drawers.
Grab their baggy.
Actually, Mrs. Penzog has talked about, instead of just doing it in the gym, if she could get enough volunteers, like to have someone in the different wings, like they can even walk down here, but have a loop through the cafeteria where those aides will still be in there to monitor. And they'll be like, oh, this is what we have for breakfast today? Maybe they'll swing through and get breakfast. And we might get one people just if they're walking in there. And she has talked to me about that because she didn't want to take away from the breakfast count. But she wants to not have kids sit on the bus.
So if they do walking club, they, they're finished, they grab their stuff and then everybody walks through the cafeteria before they go. I don't know.
So it's something that we're looking at. Another thing with the Healthy Hunger for Kids Act, there's a lot of rules that came out, just so you're aware, professional standards. So Vicki, who is considered a director along with Amanda, she has had 12 hours of professional standard training a year. She just finished some serve safe training, takes the test.
Passed.
She passed. So if you go to a restaurant with her, she'll know all the rules and everything. And that's required. She had to have that. All of the staff, any staff working in the cafeteria that are six hours, this is per year, but they have to have six hours per year. If they work over 20 hours a week, if they work under 20 hours a week, we have to give them at least four hours a year of training time. And we always take care of that for you. We make sure that they'll have all that training. But that is required through the USDA and the state. So moving forward, again, you know, we're, you know, we're halfway through our first year in here and we've checked a lot of things off the list, but we have a long way to go as we evaluate everything. You know, our goal is to, again, keep trying to increase participation and revenue for you. So that, you know, the ultimate goal of the food service program is to have a self-sufficient bottom line. So you don't have to subsidize the program out of your general fund. So that's always our goal, is to give you at a break even or making some money so that you can reinvest it in the program. So, you know, that's what we're continuing to do, is seeing what those kids like, you know, and increasing sales. Getting you through successful audits. You know, we want to make sure you're in compliance, you're following the rules so that the state can't come back and take money away from you. So you want to make sure that you're doing anything right. Again, quality of food and menu variety, that's what we continually do with our corporate chefs and our menus. We want to control costs and we utilize that government food. So again, we want your revenue to be high, expenses to be low, so you have that good bottom line. Continual training on the cafeteria staff. Again, they've been great. We've been working with them slowly, getting them, you know, to learn our recipes and how things go. So we'll continue with that. Nutrition education, we'll go into the classroom. We have multiple programs that are low cost in the district. So we enjoy doing that. As far as equipment grants and breakfast grants, we always are looking at those and applying for those to see some extra money. And communication with the parents and staff and students. Just trying to get out there and communicate just like we are tonight, give you a better understanding of how it all works. So the kids get, so, again, we're really happy to be here. It's been a great year. So if you have any questions, any time, you can get ahold of us up here. So, yeah, thank you.
We learned a little bit about food service tonight. So sorry we took so much time.
You're delivering on everything that we're hoping for. This is the final, I have a question.
Oh, just a few questions actually, just from a parent standpoint.
You can just touch base with them if you don't mind.
Sure. Oh, sure. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh.
Catch them while they're here.
Do you want me to speak out loud or talk to them?
Just talk to them.
Just talk.
Thank you again.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, moving on with our business administrator's report. Mrs. Penning, you may continue.
Thank you. For tonight, I have just three reports. The treasures report for month ending January 31st, 2020. Cash in the bank is $10,6135.19. And then capital projects, as of January 31st, 2020, $1,889.51. And the general fund has written checks this month since the last board meeting totaling $37,116.96. The rest of the reports will be ready for next week's meeting.
Any questions for the business administrator this evening? It's Paris.
So capital projects, is this still leftovers from the middle school?
It is, yes.
When we start the stadium project, are you going to open an additional capital projects account in the books? Or you're going to, you'll be able to.
So. There is an agenda item to open an account through Pliget. We are required to have all of our bond proceeds go into a separate account for tax reporting purposes. So all of the money for the stadium project will initially go into that account. And it will be expended out of that according to the draw schedule for the project.
So that's how we'll see the drawdown of those funds.
Yes.
Through that.
Yes.
The advantage of that account is for your own.
Yes, and the reason, the reason I'm recommending that account is that this, our capital projects account earns next nothing in interest. And the account at Pliget is going to earn 1.57% for the period of time that it's there. So it'll be $3 million for maybe a month or so and then we'll have to pay down something. But for the six month period of time that we're going to have construction, we're at least earning some more money on that, so.
Any other questions for Mrs. Penning? Thank you, Mrs. Penning.
Thank you.
If there's nothing on legal advisement for next week, Chair recognizes Mr. Marty Pushcheck for Finance. Mr. Pushcheck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three items for next week at this time under F1. The board we ask to consider three budgetary transfers. First one from the funded reserve fund, the capital projects fund in the amount of $1,184,898.98.
Could you repeat that please?
Yes, first budgetary transfer from the funded reserve fund, the capital project fund in the amount of $1,184,898.98. Cover capital projects to date related to the WAM renovations and then we'll bring that account to zero. The next one under that, same F1, budgetary transfer $310,000 from unassigned fund balance to the funded fund balance for the outdoor stadium complex renovation contingency. And finally, our monthly budgetary transfer from the budget purchase actual report as outlined.
Which is not done yet, but it will be for next week.
We'll, we'll take these one at a time without objection. Any questions or discussions on F1?
So I guess just that we, just that we will put, like, we'll make sure the agenda is reflecting, it's missing.
The number amounts.
Yeah, that's, that's what Mr. Pushcheck is saying.
Yeah, no, no, I know we did it. I just mentioned it.
Any other questions on F1 regarding the budgetary transfer? Hearing none, those will be on the agenda for next week.
Next, F2, the board will be asked to approve the 2020, 2021 general fund operating budget. In the Erie County area of tech school and secondary programs, international career and technical center adult programs as presented for adoption. 2021 general fund budget includes total expenditures of $6,913,417 with total district contributions of $4,287,511, which includes the Wattsburg area school district's contribution of $333,495.
Any discussion or questions regarding the approval of the tech school budget?
Just like they had, because I was at that meeting and that's an increase of 21,000. But what they're, the increase they're asking for really isn't that much of an increase. It's like, it seemed like they're low balling the increase, which I thought was interesting. They were talking about how really they could have went up to a certain percentage, whatever that was, but they went below that. Maybe it was 2.3, but they could have up to 2.6. And there was some concern that they were low balling it, but it looked at a great number for us. So just saying.
Mr. Push, I got another question?
Yes, Mr. Glazer. So our contribution of the 303,3000 is based on our, I know we're paying a percentage of your overall budget. Does it matter how many students we actually use to service? We're paying based on another number of organs on student.
It's based on student has their formula.
Any other questions or discussion regarding F2, Erie County Tech School budget? Will be asked to approve that next week. Without objection, that will be on the agenda for next week.
F3, the board will be asked to approve the Pennsylvania local government investment trust resolution as outlined.
And Mrs. Penning already explained this to us during her report. Any additional questions for the, is it Pliget?
Pliget.
Pliget. Any questions regarding the Pliget resolution?
I did look at other options too, but this, this company, it's a, like a credit union for government agencies. They have the best rates, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none, F3 will be on the agenda for next week.
That's all I have under finance at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Pushcheck. Chair recognizes Mr. Josh Paris for buildings and grounds. Mr. Paris.
Mr. President, I have two items. B1, the addition of the Javelin Ball Field Walkway for the stadium project. And B2, the standard choice.
Mr. Bruin.
Yeah, if you want to pull that up, you can blow that up.
We have a clear winner?
Yeah, so the, you know, we, we heard that the student should have. Yeah, so, the, you know, we heard that the students should have, so we put, I think there was seven total options, a few combinations of blue, green, this logo, that logo, so we gave as many options as we could that fit into our project budget, and with things that can actually be put, printed in turf, you know, the lobes have to be fairly simple. So this was the overwhelming favorite, the green skirt around the outside, with point end zones and the old thing. Those alternate blue panels, it's not a light blue color, it's the same, I should have brought the samples over, it's the same Seneca blue, but it has white tencils woven into it, so you get this slight panel effect, and they recommend that for beginning purposes, makes it easier to track the first out on this, you know, more reference point visually. So that's the overwhelming winner from the students.
I appreciate the administration's willingness to allow the students to select that, I think that's given them some ownership.
When they, when they voted, were they able to vote more than once?
No.
Okay.
Because we use Microsoft forms, so they had to be logged in as them.
Okay, just checking, because the kids were saying that other kids were hitting boom, 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 like they wanted a certain number, and I don't think that, I mean, kids were saying they were doing that, but I thought, there's no way that that would be allowed, because I was looking at the numbers, it'd be in the thousands, like, for what they want.
Yeah, if you add those numbers up, it's, it's just a good problem.
Good deal.
Again, thank you for allowing us to do that, and I think it's important for us to memorialize this approval in our resolution next week, which you see as being true. The board is approving this, but we're approving this. Any questions on B1 regarding the Javelin runway and the ball field walkways? Mr. Bruin, just remind us real quick, these two items?
Those, those add-ons, they weren't in the original scope of work, but those came out of discussions with the coaching staff. I had Mr. Carter sit down with all the coaching staff that would be using the facility, and they, they said, boy, it'd be nice if we had a Javelin runway, because it's just, they do that behind the concession stand, it's just a money mess every year, so that'll clean that up. And then the ball field walkways, if you've been up there, it's configured strangely now, you have to kind of walk through the baseball field to get to the softball field. So this, this will clean that up, so there's separate entrances, and it also makes it more ADHD or handicap accessible for those folks.
ADHD.
ADHD, yeah.
I thought I was...
Yeah, handicap accessible.
And thank you again for having your administration touch base with the coaches regarding these two. Can you remind me where the Javelin is thrown? I still can't picture it. Right, yeah. Right, yeah.
So, like, kind of like behind this storage building, the new storage building, and they throw out into the...
So it is just shot put, use the space?
At the end, other end of the...
On the other end of the...
Shot put and disc.
Where that black crescent is.
On the back side of that. And there was nothing mentioned about that in the conversations with them?
Those are, like, smooth concrete, I think they would want that for the feet.
True, yes, they are.
So then that, the shot put hits the putt out there.
It's actually outside of the fence.
It is, right, yeah. The backside there.
Now, there, we still have been looking into drainage in the ball fields, because originally, Erie thought our guys could do that, but then we found out that there has been attempts in the past. There are drainage tiles, as previous meetings people put out there, so we're having the Keystone engineers to look at that, and if they still give us a price, and we can consider what that might be, but we're thinking, because what was tried before, we don't know what's out there, and we start digging, we don't know what we'll run into, we might want to have professionals take a look at it for us, so I'll bring that to you, and then we can decide when's the fourth we want to do drainage now. We had, we had them separate that out, because it does change, leave the eco reserve formula, so to speak, so if that drainage was, the scope of that drainage, all that square footage, if that was added into the project, oh, how many fees for the work that we're going to do on the football field would go up. So what they'll do is cement the football field in that project as it is, and then they'll file an addendum for the additional work, so that we'll truly be able to get a partial out price for what it cost to do that addition. There won't be much money to, 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 with the other project.
Any other questions or discussion regarding the two items under buildings and grounds? Mrs. Peddic?
I do. I guess I'm assuming that PIAA is okay with the new, for district events? They are?
Yeah, Mr. Carter had contacted PIAA, and so there's two different regulations.
Okay, good. And then, the other thing, I want to know, all the dirt that we're digging out for the turf, can we use that for the front of the soccer field to make it wider? So it's going to have... It's too narrow.
We can look it down.
Since we already have the fill.
I mean, it's our dirt, we're hauling it away.
Right, we can just haul it down and...
You're going to have to worry about approaching that one, yes.
Yeah, that, that is, that is the way it is, because of the wetland situation.
But it was already built up the first time. Because that field was there.
But now you're trying to make it larger, which you cannot do.
That field was built, was already filled with fill, to build it up, a long time ago. So how could that change?
As I mentioned, this might be, that might have been a blind, so, this is an area I'm not evaluating, but I can talk to Erie about it. We'll have plenty of time and plenty of dirt.
Right. I just wanted to mention that now, before the dirt got, you know, scooped up by somebody else, I want it for the soccer field on the front.
We're paying for that dirt to get all the way.
I mean, if you get, let's just take it down.
Well, and if you get that too on the other side there, honestly, for the band practice and now too, there's, there's probably lots of areas that could get a little...
The country course, who is very muddy too, we're bidding on dirt.
I know. I said it first, and that's in a minute, somebody's writing this down.
Any further questions on the two items under buildings and grounds? Any further discussion? Without objection, those will be on the agenda for next week. Thank you, Mr. Paris. Chair recognizes Mr. Jeremy Blazer for personnel, Mr. Blazer?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five items under personnel for next week's meeting. P1, to approve the Kelly substitute additions as listed. P2, for the appointments for the following personnel appointments, Sarah Stoops as long-term substitute teacher at WAMs, and Mackenzie Jones as custodian level two. P3, conference request as detailed in the agenda. P4, tuition reimbursements as detailed in the attachment. And P5, to approve the leave of absence detail for this.
Any questions or discussion on the five personnel items? Hearing none, those will be on the agenda for your consideration next week. Thank you, Mr. Blazer. Chair recognizes Mrs. Amanda Farrell for policy, Mrs. Farrell, big night to you today.
Big night. Mr. President, the one item is for the first reading of the policies as outlined below the story about earlier this evening.
Any further questions on these policies? This will be our first reading. First reading will be afterward. Hearing none, those will all be on the agenda for your consideration for first reading next week. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell. Chair recognizes Mrs. Julie Dikemitz for curriculum, Mrs. Dikemitz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items under curriculum that I'd like to move to next week's agenda. C1, homebound instruction, and C2, the 2020 prom.
Very important curriculum.
Yes.
Any discussion or questions on the two curriculum items?
I have a question on prom.
Yes, Mrs. Pound?
Hi, thank you. Do we go solicit other buildings to go to for prom, or do we, do the students pick it, or how does that work?
Generally, the advisor of, you have to see, they have discussions, they'll talk about where they want to go.
Any further questions?
Assuming this is a safe place to down.
It's a beautiful venue.
Okay.
It's beautiful.
Okay.
It's safe, it's right by you.
Then Erie's right there too, so we swap, swap it before.
That's all I have for tonight.
Without objection, those will be on the agenda for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Dikemitz.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Tara Pound for technology, Mrs. Pound?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item, TE1, to approve the agreement between Leftergary School District and Re...
Reebok?
We'll be doing a network assessment for our technologies.
Any questions or discussion on that item? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Pound. Chair recognizes Mr. Stephen O'Donnell for transportation, Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items for the agreement's agenda. T1, the term bus driver additions, and T2, the transportation requests.
Any questions on the two items under transportation as presented? Any discussion? Hearing none, those items will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Chair recognizes Mr. Sean Mathis for athletic and extracurricular, Mr. Mathis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have five items on the agenda for athletics and extracurriculars. The first one is AE1, it's the volunteer list, for all the volunteers that are listed below to be approved for next week's agenda. And then I have AE2, which is the athletic resignation of Ms. Randy Cage for the track and field effective January 21st of 2020. AE3, which is an open position, to approve the opening of football second assistants, other assistant, and other assistant subordinated group. AE4, which is an athletic appointment, to approve Brandon Williams to track and field varsity head coach for the 2019-2020 season. And then AE5, which is the organization of extracurricular clubs, to approve the non-regular club, the Science High School History Club. And that all on next week's agenda.
Any questions or discussion for the five items under athletic and extracurricular? Mr. Paris?
Are those three positions for football? Or is that going to be one person?
There's, there's several.
I think it's actually five.
Five positions?
Yeah. Like, there's a couple, either other assistant.
Other assistant.
Yeah, it's about five or six positions.
Can we spell that out for next week? So...
Yeah, we can, we can list all their names.
Check, check how many of those other assistants?
Two second assistants, two other assistants, and, yeah.
If you could, please.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. You have another question? That's all for me, thank you. Mrs. Dikemitz?
Yes, I'm concerned about the September eighth grade old soccer coach position. I don't remember it being on last month's agenda, it's not on this month's agenda. Signups were in the office for the last two weeks. There is a coach who is kind of taking over the program, and I was trying to help him get information, but she's not really approved yet. It's Kim Brady. Um, that's kind of a slow...
If you recall, we have approved the resignation of the previous coach for September eighth grade.
A while ago.
Right, so that spot is still there.
So it's been open for months.
Right, so we may need to go on...
Girl soccer, what?
September eighth grade.
Seven days, okay.
Well, we can add that to the addendum, I'm not sure why that's not here.
Thank you.
Mr. Blazer?
Just had a question on, what is the process? So I see that, you know, we're talking about a resignation, and I see their opening positions, I see Ms. Cage resigning, and we already have the new track and field coach, so just educate us on how Mr. Carter handles someone resigns, and then he puts the posting up internally or...
So, we have to post the head positions internally, and in the teacher contract, there's language that makes it clear that the head coach selects the assistant coaches, makes those recommendations. So, a lot of times, Mr. Carter will go to staff members first that he thinks would be a good fit. It's generally better to have a staff member be a coach, because they have interaction with the students more, that would be good. So Mr. Brandon Williams, for example, he's been helping out with not only football, but track and field as an assistant, and he indicated when Randy resigned, that he liked the head coach position. He's very qualified, he's a collegiate athlete, has a lot of experience, so that's how that particular recommendation comes. Now, if we don't have somebody that will, or somebody that we feel will do a good job, if they're unsavant, then we will go out and have them.
Is there an official posting that goes out from?
They have to post for head coaches.
So Brandon, so Randy, Randy resigned, a posting went up for a period of time.
Was it 10 days or 18?
I think it's 10, I think it's two weeks.
Two weeks.
And then Randy put a date in on it, and he's working it.
How many other people did?
I don't know.
Is the, the new teachers' contract that we approved in the last meeting including some additional improvements to the base scale, or say, for, for current coaches? Is that an effect, I can't, does that affect next school year or next?
Starts with next school year.
Starts now.
You have a question for discussion? Mrs. Dikemitz?
Do we remember when we actually approved the fall coaching staff? Remember what part?
It was in August, I believe, we did that.
No, I think it's earlier, right? It was August, it starts, I think it was in June.
I think it was June.
So if there's any openings in the fall, it would be, we won't approve it until...
So in the, in the teacher contract, if there's an opening in the middle of the season, the administration can tell whoever they want, then it has to be posted.
I have one more, just a clarification. So, correct me if I'm wrong, from school board responsibility, are we responsible for hiring and firing? Or do we just get recommendations from you to...
Right, so, so it's the administration's job to, to vet, recruit, advertise, and then recommend, and that's, that's actually one of our board policies, says that the superintendent will make recommendations for hiring. But I can't hire only in a affirmative vote, vote by the board, it's also a...
So we just need to trust the administration that they're vetting these folks appropriately, and we're hiring qualified, top-tier people?
Yes, that's, and that really is our, that's our job, but I'm the best possible.
Hearing none, those five items will be on the agenda for your consideration for next week's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mathis. Nothing under miscellaneous this evening, Mr. O'Donnell, what do you report this week, next week? Do you have anything to report?
I'll report next week, but I do have a question, and that is, one of the things that came out of that meeting was, all the other districts are, they went into this grant for what's called Gem City, this Gem City project, but we're the only district that did not connect to that, and I was just curious, Ken, why we didn't participate, because every other district was participating in that.
Beck and I looked at that when it came out, and, I mean, you can talk to it, but it's kind of redundant for things we're, we already have.
Yeah, so, that, when that grant initially came out, the IU deferred and was not going to participate in it, because of the PA Smart Grant that has already been awarded in this area, and we're part of that grant. We also have three other grants going on right now, so we're involved in the PA Smart Grant, we're involved in the Early Literacy Grant, we have a Vex Robotics Grant that we're a part of, that several other districts are not a part of, and we're the only district in this area that is part of an outdoor classroom grant, where we're looking at approximately $35,000 to be awarded before the end of the school year to better our outdoor classroom facility over here. When I looked at the Gem City Grant, they, they boast about a curriculum, first of all, it's not been awarded yet, they boast of a curriculum, there really is not a curriculum, what they have established right now was developed by teachers, and it's essentially kind of like a museum, where students can put goggles on and walk through a virtual labyrinth of art that's... of art that students have created. It's really cool, don't get me wrong, but it's very elementary in its setup right now, and with all of the other grants that we have going on right now, and the potential for Safe Schools Grant being awarded here within the next couple of months as well, it just didn't seem like the level of professional development that's often involved in those types of grants, and sending teachers out, and just the lack of foundation that really is established right now in regards to curriculum and how we can tie it into our curriculum, is nonexistent at this point. So, just seemed like it wasn't where we really want to put our energies at this time. Not to say that we won't eventually want to jump on that bandwagon, because it is cool, but just not educationally meaningful at this point.
Yeah, and if I can add to that, I mean, I have double award grants, I know Beck has, it always seems great, like, wow, look at this amount of money and this equipment we're getting, but there's always, there's always costs in personnel, time, and training.
Yeah, a lot of time.
And, I mean, grants should really be called, we want, here's money to do someone else's agenda, that's what grants should be called, in my opinion. Now, they're not all bad, but they do come with a lot of soft costs, which can tie up a lot of the, a lot of times, so we looked at it, and if I can be, you know, kind of really blunt about it, it's a big gold star for the Fairview School District, is what that is. Because they're, they're the teachers that design this online museum, or even walk through and look at artwork that the Fairview students throw, you know, but we just didn't see, I mean, maybe in the future.
Yeah, if I could say to my biology teacher, you can do a virtual tour of the human anatomy, and this is where it ties into your curriculum, is this something you're interested in? Then absolutely. But they don't have that content yet. It's essentially a museum in the shape of a gem, thus Gem City, and let's walk through and see what Mill Creek students created, physically.
Yeah, they had described it, but the way in which they communicated was, well, every district's doing it. Oh, no, not every district. And they looked over towards me and said, it's lots of birds on it.
Well, when we...
So they already have enough gems.
When we get awarded our 35, officially awarded our outdoor classroom grant, then you can say how we're the only district that...
I will.
Yeah, you'll, you'll be able to throw ours back out.
Everything else I can, I'll say at the, the meeting, because, I mean, it's always true.
Well, and the PA Smart Grant, I mean, we have 3D printers going on at, you know, in our...
No, no, we're doing plenty. I was just curious what our response was, so that when I go back to that meeting, and someone says Gem City, whatever, I can say, oh, that thing.
Yeah.
Say, we have our private collection, that's only for our students.
That's okay.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. From the Northwest Try County, an immediate unit report, I will give my report tonight. I did share with you the employee turnover data that the executive director had shared with us, director of HR from the IU. And remember, we're serving, the IU's serving 17 school districts, a lot of different areas, and one of the areas are AIDS, many different types of AIDS, most of them specialty, one-on-one AIDS, and they're all part-time positions, so part of the high turnover is people moving from part-time one to full-time, so there's always part-time. And I think I shared with you, last month, the difficulty is trying to get specialty area teachers such as occupational therapy, therapy, speech language, it's all around. So it's just the state of affairs that we are today. Similar to the Erie County Technical School, you'll be asked to approve the IU budget in March, if, if meetings coincide, in April, so in March or April, you'll be asked to approve the IU budget, and this is the annual event that takes place for both the county technical school and the IU. Each school district is part of that, has to approve that budget. Any questions? Anything under Board forms, comments, and files?
I have a few questions.
Yes, Mrs. Town.
On the, some of the attachments that we got, one was for the floor and carpet. I'm assuming this is already contracts that we have agreed to.
Oh, that came in the weekly update?
Yeah.
Okay, so what that was, we were just trying to clarify, there was a comment made by the local auditor that we didn't have all of the middle school things approved ahead of time, and Vicki happened to be digging through the minutes and found that, yes, in April, we approved all 4.2 million dollars worth of expenditures. Those are some documents that didn't surface when the auditors were here.
The auditors had copies of all of the minutes, but did not make note that...
Not just the auditor's number.
Right.
But let the community know, we approved all 4.2 million dollars.
Is that something you can go back to the auditors with, or because we've approved the final, it's closed?
I did send them the information, and the response I got from them was, thanks for sending this along, this is great. But because the financial statements have already been approved in their entirety, it cannot be, it's not changed, it's not changed.
Anything else for Board forms?
I just want to say that Becky and I were, they were very interested.
Mr. President, I do have one other...
Yes, Mrs. Farrell.
One other thought I had, as we were listening to the ladies from the nutrition group, I do wonder how communication about some of that, especially, I was talking at the elementary school level, is going out to parents. I didn't know that after walking club, they could walk through and grab something, and so I guess...
I don't know.
Well, and I, I mean, I guess I wonder if it's just, but, well, but I think they're saying, though, that regardless of what time kids come in, and so, I mean, I guess I do wonder if it is a, if you want to grab breakfast, that you're dismissed. I know that Mrs. Pinzog encourages them to eat breakfast first, I, I hear that all the time, but I guess I wonder if that is an option. And I also too, about the sharing table, I think that the ladies in the cafeteria have a very hard job to do, and so I think they do a great job of keeping all of that in order, but I guess I wonder if kids are aware that that's there. You know, and just in kind of what the communication is back and forth with the, with the students on, on what might be available.
I think Mr. Relling, who takes place in the department of Home and Urban, makes some calories, and some stuff.
And I think it's just comments that I hear from, from my kids, that I think it's just they don't know that they can, type of a thing, because, you know, really, once they come in and they sit down, they're, they're there until it's, you know, cleanup time, or however they position it, but, you know, that if it is an extra thing, milk that could be had, or, I think that's nice that that happens.
And the cafeteria, they're not presenting, at the regular board meeting, are they? So, questions like Joy had, we don't know what she asked, so it may, may be of interest to everybody sitting here on what the questions were, and what the answers given to her were. I don't know if you can give us some of the cafeteria folks?
Anything else? I will make an announcement that this board will meet an executive session following this meeting for the purposes of discussing technology personnel. Technology personnel. All entertaining motions are adjourned.
Still so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you for those in attendance this evening.